I'm in my eye after a week off. We're back. I don't, I'm not sure how I'm feeling. I was feeling very purple today. I'm not, I'm not sure how I'm feeling about this, but. I swear this cat like. Sorry about that. So anyway, um, so welcome back to study session. We had a week off last week. But um, we are back and picking up where we left off. So uh, if you are new again, the book we are currently reading. Is Egyptian Magic by E A Wallace Budge. And we are picking up on page forty eight. I'm like, where is? I don't know. Alright, sorry. So we're picking up on page forty eight and forty eight is um, the amulet of the vulture. Um, so. The text reads. Uh, the amulet of the vulture or this amulet was intended to cause the power of Osset as a divine mother. To be a protection for the deceased and was made of gold in the form of a vulture. Hovering in the air without stretched wings and holding in each talon and ank. Now. I know uh, we had like started kinda talking about this cuz I accidentally like skipped a page or something. So um. But just to kinda, I guess, finish it out. Um, with this amulet and then he cites in the chapter of the Pert and Haru. Um, he says, Osset cometh and houvereth over the city. And she goeth about seeking the secret habitations of Haru as he emerges emerges. From his papyrus swamps and she raiseth up his shoulders. A shoulder which is. An evil case. He is made one of the company. And the divine boat and the sovereignty of the whole world is decreed for him. He hath warred mightily and maketh his deeds to be remembered. He hath made the fear of him to exist and awe of him to have its being. His mother, the mighty lady protected him and she hath transferred her power unto him. The first allusion is to the care which Osset shewed. For Haru when she was bringing him up in the papyrus swamps and the second. Uh, to his combat with Satesh whom he vanquished through the might of Osset. So um. I'm thinking like, you know, especially as an amulet, um. Primarily like for the deceased and to have that type of protection like that. Nurture in guidance. Um, makes sense to me cuz you know, as you traverse through the um, duat or uh, through. I know there's another word I'm forgetting, but um, you need that kind of protection. So I can even say like. As we go through life, we meet like, you know, mama always said, like, we still have that kind of. Uh, saying now where we, we refer to like. The lessons of our mom and, and what we were taught when we were little, that kind of thing. So um, it makes sense to me. So the next chapter, chapter or section seven, the amulet of the collar of gold. This amulet. Was intended to give the deceased power to free themselves from their swathings. It is ordered by the rubric to the, oh, and I forgot what we even said, but C L V I I I. So I think it's a. Either fifty seventh or a hundred and fifty seventh, I think. Feel free to correct me if necessary. Chapter of the um, Pert and Haru to be placed on his neck on the day of the funeral and to be made of gold. The text of the chapter reads, oh, my father, oh, my brother, oh, my mother Osset. I am unswathed and I see. I am one who. I'm sorry. I am one of those who are unswathed. And to see the. Oh, it's the spelling. Sorry, it's spelling for me. See the Netaru Geb. He has it spelled S E B Seb, but Geb. This amulet is very rare and appears to have been expression of beliefs. Beliefs which grew up in the period of the ten twenty sixth dynasty from um, five hundred and fifty B C E. Um, so the amulet looks like. That right there. Um, the amulet of the papyrus scepter. And this is funny because you'll see like a lot of different Netaru holding different scepters. And like. Not to say it's confusing cuz it's not. It's like kinda like, once you learn it, it's super easy. Uh, but there are different scepters that have different meanings and different connotations and. You know, and if it's, if it's this scepter and that crown on that Netaru, you like, it's, it's um. So like, one way I could kinda see this is like, um, again, I am a teacher by trade and I. Um, use emojis for like everything. And today I was um, I was trying to figure out like. I, I wanted this place for where my students to like turn their work in. And I found out. That there is an emoji and it's red. It's in Japanese and it's, it means like. Good work or something like that. So I was like, oh, that's so dope. But again, I don't speak Japanese, but. It's that idea of, okay, I wanna use that symbology because that's what I'm trying to emulate. So like, when I think of the crowns and the scepters and the different symbols and stuff like that, it's kinda like, okay, well, what am I going for? Cuz um, you know, and even when we use other emoji, like some people can use. The face like this was even, this was like a fake argument in my, one of my classes where. You know, it's like the one where the smirk and the eyes are looking. Uh, to the side, that little emoji and some people see that as like a naughty emoji. Some people see it as like, yeah, right emoji. So again, it depends on the context in which, how you understand it. So. Um, anyway, so to continue. Uh, this amulet was intended to give the deceased vigor and renewal of youth. I'm about to get that tattooed like all over the place. Cuz COVID got me. Got me a lot more sedentary than I'm used to. So I'm just like, oh, I need some vigor and, and youth. Let me. I need a papyrus scepter. Alright, so sorry. Uh, so this amulet was intended to give the deceased vigor and renewal of youth. It was made of mother of emeralds or of light green or blue porcelain. And when the word, in the words of the, oh gosh, here we go again. I really wish I remembered what the C in Roman numerals were, um, meant. So. I hate to ask, but if you could Google it again, I would really appreciate it cuz I forgot. I remember the L is fifty. So it's. Fifth. Nine fifty. So I think it's a hundred and fifty ninth. Cuz you know how you gotta like read it backwards and then put it all together. So forgive me. But C L I X clicks. That's for detox. Clicks. If you've ever done the detox, it's like, oh, that's interesting. Um, I'm in my eyes. Um, so the hundred and fifty ninth chapter of the Pert and Haru. Um, had been recited over it and it was placed on the neck on the day of the funeral. That's interesting. Like, I think one reason, and I know I've mentioned this before, like one reason, um. That I at least like this um, particular chapter. Um, and I could read it out of the Pert and Haru too, um. But for me, when I read it, I know the Pert has a lot of layers to understand. So um. It's just the idea of, I like reading other things to kinda help give me context to, to understand. So. Um, but just the fact like, okay, if some, if I was to pass away or if another comedic person was to pass away, like. What do we do? So um, I, I, I really like the way that this is broken down and kinda goes through it. Um, and explains that. Um. So in the ten twenty sixth chapter, I'm sorry, in the twenty sixth uh, dynasty. And later it seems as if the amulet represented the power of Osset. Who derived it from her father, the husband of Renanet. Now, now that makes me wanna Google too, where I'm thinking to myself like, wait a minute, hold on. I, I know like. When did Renanet become Ra's wife? That I didn't know. I'm like reading the comments. Um. So I didn't know that, AKA something for me to Google and note for myself. Um, the nets hurt of abundance, harvest and food. At an earlier period, judging from the text of the, there we go with the C again. So fifty sixtieth, hundred and sixtieth chapter, the amulet is put on by the Netaru Jehudi. Jehudi right there. Also why I think I was like in a purple mood today. Um. Into the hands of the deceased who says, it is in sound state and I am in sound state. It is not injured and I am not injured. It is not worn away and I am not worn away. I think that's another reason why um, I can appreciate this book again, like I'm, I'm, I don't wanna say I'm the biggest Budge fan. Um. But. Hmm, how can I put this? He does have a way of like kinda compartmentalizing things and, you know. Learning thousands of years worth of rituals, traditions, history and stuff can just be like overwhelming at times. So I can appreciate that. But what I was thinking is like. You know, uh, especially nowadays, like in twenty twenty one, we like to use a lot of affirmations and like meditations and things like that. So. The fact that he has like a lot of one liners. I like that. Um, so like. The fact that like I could say, I am in sound state. I am in sound state. I am in sound, like, you know, and kinda repeat that. I like that line in particular. Um, I also like the fact, especially when it's like you be in your feelings sometimes cuz I'm not gonna lie, earlier this week, I was in my feelings. Um. I was very, very overwhelmed between like work and other things going on. Um, so something like that, like I have another mantra I have in my mind. But I like this, like. Um, I am not injured. I am not worn away. Like, okay, chill, like, kinda like that way of saying, um. Um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond to that in a second. Um. But it's just this idea of like, when we get in our feelings and people be like, just breathe through it, like, just do this, just do that. And it's like, when you're like. Ah, or like, I'm upset or whatever, like, you know, sometimes it's hard to be like. Walking your, okay, let me breathe, let me do this, let me do that. But what I, at least in my personal experience, like. One of the things that is easier for me to kinda help me get into, okay, breathe in the second third, like a little segue. Um, it are affirmations. Um, so like. Uh, I love myself. I am safe. I am this. I like, I like to use a lot of I statements. Um. You know, like that helps kinda bring me down. Okay, now, now start breathing. Okay, stop like, you know, so it's, 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 it's a nice, I like those one liners. Um. So uh, the comment is, I like Budge because he didn't make his notes racist, kept them neutral and accurate. I will say generally speaking, the accurate part is the one I agree. The only reason I would say like free of racism is because he is from the early nineteen hundreds. So. And he is a male. He is a white male. So like. His social status can still be, um. You know, reflected of the society and time period that he lived in. Um. Like for example, uh, in my class today, we were watching, we, we were finishing talking about the middle passage. And I like to really break it down. When we talk about the middle passage, like, okay, first you had the coffles, then you had the slave dungeons, then you had the actual. Uh, boat ride and then, you know, and then after that, we had the, the seasoning places and then we had the, like, you know, and we had all these other things going on. And um, it really kinda helps things like uh, make a little more sense for the students because often it's usually like. They took us, we were put on boats and they sold us and that was it. Like, you know, it, it's oversimplified. So I like to really try to go into detail. So uh, as part of the seasoning you, like portion, we, we read, uh, I'm sorry, we uh, talk about. Oh, gosh, why can't I remember the name? The farm, the breeding farms and we talk about um, like buck breaking and things like that. And um. Uh, so I showed them that one scene from Hidden Collar. Wait. Hidden colors, is it? I. You know how you just have so much information in your mind? Sometimes you can't remember the right name for the right thing, but Hidden Colors, I believe it is. And um. There's that one part where they're like, it wasn't buck breaking, it was butt breaking or butt busting or, you know, something like that. So I had to ask the kids, I said, well, you know, as historians, as young people, like, how can we, like, are, is there any bias in this? How can we break it down to try to be fair, blah, 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 blah. So, you know, and they kinda said, you know, the language or. It only showed these things and it was only made and it was only like, so they did a good job like breaking it down. So getting back to the point of um. Of Budge. I think he really did do his best for his time period and everything to not reflect those things, but. You know, the norms and values of nineteen hundred England versus twenty twenty one. Um, is, you know, we have a lot more understanding when it comes to race and things like that. Whereas, you know. During his time period, race was considered a scientific study. Like you could actually study it like it was a real science when, you know, we know now that it was a pseudoscience. It wasn't real. Um, because it's a social construction. So I, I could, like I said, I can very much agree with. You know, especially compared to other authors of the time period. Um. But and I, I also think like when it comes to, you have levels of historians where you have some people where. Um, as they are doing their work, um. They can't, everybody's themselves. You can't hide it. Um, so it comes through in some way, shape or form, like uh, even my students have said to me like, you know, miss, we appreciate talking to you because. You don't just tell us all your beliefs and your thoughts and you're this and you're that. I was like, cuz they don't pay me to. Tell you what I think. They pay you to tell, you know, to share what I know and what I've learned. And. Uh, and they're like, you know, we could clearly tell, you know, sometimes, but when it comes to like actually giving your personal opinions or. Telling us, yeah, that's right, that's not right, or whatever, like you kinda let us, you just ask us questions. I'm like. Yes, because I said, I'm not a dictator. You have your own brain. You've, the creator has put a brain in your own head to come up with your own thoughts, like. Who am I to sit here and, and, you know, do all of that? It's too much. Uh, I can make suggestions. I could point stuff out, but it's ultimately. Uh, ultimately up to you. So when it comes to um, any book, all, all. Media, all videos, everything has bias, like we're human beings. There's no way around it, like we're human beings, like uh, we make judgments all the time, like. My judgment today, purple is gonna look good. Not so much, not so much. I matched the book. See, look, I'm, I'm in too purple of a mood. Anyway, get back on topic. Alright, so the amulet of the soul. So that looks like. Can you see it right there? So it, it's like a, a falcon body and then a head with a little beard. And um, if I recall correctly, the beard is like a symbol of authority. Um, so that's why like when we see all the old um, statues and stuff, they have that like little beard on there. Um, yeah. Alright, so this amulet was made of gold. I love the fact that they, he, he differentiate and actually gives you the detail of like. What each thing, what material everything was made out of, I think especially for contemporary practitioners, like. That is very, very important and valuable information to, you know, again, as we are reconstructing and trying to recreate this, it's like, oh. We don't have to freestyle. We don't have to try to make it up like bam. There's evidence. Evidence based practice. Look at me, I'm like using all my teacher vocabularies. Okay, I'm done. Anyway, so this amulet was made of gold inlaid with um, precious stones in the form of a human headed hawk. And when the words of the, oh lord, this is gonna be some counting. Uh, ten twenty thirty ninth, hundred and thirty ninth chapter of the Pert and Haru. Had been recited over it. It was directed by the rubric of the chapter to be placed upon the breast of the deceased. Uh, the object of the amulet. Is apparent from the text in which the deceased is made to say. Hail thou um, Netra of Anu. Hail thou Netra of. Hmm, this is a new word. I don't know this one. P E H R E R, Perer. I don't know if that's like, you know how there are multiple. Uh, English versions of certain words, but that's a word I definitely would have to look up. Um. So P E H R E R. Uh, so hail thou Netra of Perer, the, who dwellest in thy hall. Grant thou that thy soul may come unto me from wheresoever it may be. If it would tarry, then let my soul be brought unto me from wherever it may be. Let me have possession of my soul and my spirit. Let me be true of voice with them wheresoever they be. Hail ye Netaru, who tow along the boats of the Lord of millions of years, who bring in it. I'm sorry, who bring it above the underworld and who make it to travel over Newt. Who makes souls to enter into their spiritual bodies. Grant that, that the soul of Assar. AKA the person who passed away, not the Netra Assar. Um, grant that, that the soul of Assar may come forth before the Netaru. And that it may be true of voice with you in the east of the sky and. Follow unto the place where it was yesterday and enjoy twofold peace in Ament. See, I always say Amenta, but it's Amentet here. Um, may it look upon its natural body, may it rest upon its spiritual body and may its body neither perish nor suffer corruption forever. Thus the amulet of the soul was intended to enable the soul both to unite with the mummified body and to be with its spirit or coup. Okay, and the spiritual body at will. I'm like, again, it's the, the different spellings that I'm making faces about. Um, so the next one, the amulet of the ladder, which literally just looks like a ladder, like that's it. Um, in the tombs in the ancient and middle empire, small objects of wood and other substances in form of ladders. Have often been found, but the significant. It literally says the signification. I'm like, can you tell this is a dated text? We don't say that anymore. The significance. Of them is not always apparent. From the text inscribed upon the walls of the corridors and chambers of the uh, pyramids of Unas, Teta and Pepe and other early um. Nasut biddy or Nasut, um, it is clear that the primitive, see look. See, that's the part where I'm like, it's certain word choices. Um, primitive uh, commit to you. So that's where I'm like, hmm, that's where that. Social class and race and all that other stuff I, I think comes through. Um, commit to you believed. That the floor of heaven, which was also formed the sky of this world, was made of an immense plate of iron. Never heard that before. Uh, rectangular in shape and four corners of which rested upon four pillars which served to mark the cardinal points. Uh, on this plate of iron live the Netaru and the blessed dead. And it was the aim of every commit to you to go there after death. At certain sacred spots on the edge of the plate were so near to the tops of mountains. That the deceased might easily climb onto, oh, that's interesting. Oh, so he. I'm sorry, let me finish the sentence before I say that. Might easily uh, clamor, not climb, clamor. Um. So clamor onto it. And so obtain admission into heaven. But at others, the distance between it and the earth was so great that they needed help to reach it. So they, they gave the, they gave the deceased ladders to climb up onto the plate of heaven. That is. Very logical, actually. That's very, very logical. Um, there existed in belief that Assar himself experienced some difficulty in getting up to the iron plate. And that it was only by means of the ladder by which his father Ra provided, that he at length ascended into heaven. On one side of the ladder stood Ra and the other stood Haru, the son of Osset, and each Netra assisted Assar to mount it. That's inter, I literally have never heard this before. Uh, originally, the two guardians of the ladder were Haru, uh, Haru Orso or Horus the Elder. If we're gonna use that terminology and Satesh. And there are several references in early texts to help. Uh, which they rendered to the deceased who was of course identified with the Netra Assar, but with a. There we go, that makes it better. But with a view either of remaining. Sorry, reminding these Netaru of their supposed duty or compelling them to do it, the model of a ladder was often placed. On or near the um, dead person or dead body in the tomb. And a special composition was prepared, which had the effect making the ladder become the means um, of the ascent. To the deceased into heaven. Thus, the text written for Pepe. And then he gives the reference, where to find that, what line and everything. The deceased is made to address the ladder in these words. Homage to thee, oh divine ladder. Homage to thee, oh ladder of Satesh. Standing thou upright, oh divine ladder. Stand thou upright, oh ladder of Satesh. Stand thou upright, oh ladder of Haru. Whereby Assar cometh forth into heaven when he made use of his magical power upon Ra. For Pepe is that only son and Pepe is Haru and thou hast given birth unto Pepe. Even as thou have given birth unto the Netaru, who is the lord of the ladder, AKA Haru. And thou shalt give unto Pepe the ladder of the Netaru. Thou shalt give unto him the ladder of the Netra, the Netra, sorry, Satesh whereby this Pepe shall come forth into heaven. When he shall have made use of his magical power upon Ra. This is interesting. I just had a silly thought. Let me keep going. Uh, oh thou Netra of those whose doubles or ka'ul pass onwards. When the eye of Haru soreth upon the wing of Jehudi, on the east side of the divine ladder or ladder of the Netra. Oh, men whose bodies would go into heaven. Pepe is the eye of Haru. And when the eye turneth itself on the, on any place where he is, Pepe goeth side by side with the eye of Haru. Oh, ye who are the brethren of the Netaru, rejoice ye that Pepe journeyeth among you. Yo, I'm not gonna, I, I can't read anymore without saying something like. When we, I'm, I mean, you know, when we talk about the power of our words and like. You know, making I mean my statements and I am strong, I am this, I am that. I mean, talk about affirmations like. Pepe was equate, like Pepe in this text anyway, literally is. Using hekau the way we're really supposed to, like for real. This idea like. Equating himself to Haru, like on that, I am on. God's level. I am that honorable. I am that in alignment with my art. That I am in alignment with everything that I can even call myself these things, like that is bomb. Uh, where, where am I going? Alright, and the brethren of Pepe who are the Netaru. Look, my own brothers. Are the Netaru, like later for you humanoids. You know, like, he is one in an alignment with the Netaru, like this, I, I'm really digging this. Um, I'm sorry, okay, so and the brethren of Pepe. Who are the Netaru shall be glad when they meet Pepe, even as Haru is glad when he meeteth his eye. He hath placed his eye before his father Geb and every Netaru and every spirit stretched, stretcheth. Out his hand toward Pepe when he cometh forth into heaven from the ladder. Pepe hath need neither to plow the earth nor collect the offering and he hath need neither. Gee whiz, talk about period English. And he hath need neither to go to the hall which is in Anu. Nor the hall of the morning which is in Anu. For that which he seeth and that which he heareth shall free him and nourish him. When he appeareth in heaven from the ladder. So like. It's like when we were playing, was it like Chutes and Ladders or Monopoly and they're like, no, just, just, just pass, go. Or just go to jail, go, I mean, that's like a negative way, but like now you could skip all of that stuff regular people gotta do, like. You are so in, you know, maatic and, and divine and everything, like you could just skip everything else, like just take the ladder. Just go up to heaven, you good. Pepe hath gathered together his bones. He hath collected his flesh and have gone quickly into heaven by means of the two fingers. Of the Netra of the ladder, AKA Haru. So. Ah, let me. Let me read the footnote before I say. Oh, okay, so the note that he's saying is that like, there is another line that talks about the two fingers. And it says. And it says, instead of saying um, gone quickly into heaven by the means of the two fingers of the um. The god of the or Netor of the ladder, Haru. Um, the other chapter says, give thou to Pepe these two fingers, which thou hast given to Nefert. The daughter of the great nature as messengers from the heaven of earth, so it's I, like he's comparing. I guess like two different people and how they would, because again, they wrote all of these things, like it was customized for you personally when you. Were going to the afterlife, like no two uh. Pert, if you will, were exactly the same. Uh, there were a lot of commonalities, there were some parts that were exactly the same, but the whole thing, the whole canon unto itself would not be the same. Um, you know, because. If you, you know, just like in life, some people's obituaries are gonna be really long and. And talk about a lot of accomplishments and and you know, a lot of people are gonna go up there and. I don't wanna say testify, but a lot of people gonna get up there and, oh, this person did this for me and they're so great and this and third and other people like. They were born this day, they died, they were the pa- the the son or daughter of blah, 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 like you got the basics. But you know, everybody's obit is gonna be a little different because of how they live their life, their accomplishments, et cetera. So it makes sense that, you know, he's at least differentiating and making that um comparison in lifetime, if you will. Um. Alright, uh elsewhere. And then he cites that, like where he's talking about. So elsewhere, uh the Netor Kansu. Uh Sept. That's a new one, S E P T. The Netor September. Et cetera, are invoked. To bring the ladder to Pepe and the ladder itself is adjured to come with its name and other place. And then he referenced the other place again. We read homage to thee, oh ladder, that supported the golden vase of the spirit of. I was about to say P, cuz it's literally P E. And the spirits of Nekhen. Stretch out thy hands to this Pepe and let him take his seat between the two great Netoroo, who are. In the place of this Pepe, take him by the hand and lead him towards uh Seket Heta. Or the Elysian Fields, as we call them in English, and take him to the seat amongst the stars which are in the sky. Um, so that's the end of the actual like text or him citing the text. Um, in the Thebrian uh re- recension of the Per- the importance of the ladder is also seen. For in the chapter, oh my lord. Ten fifty. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. What it, this is, okay, I'm not gonna get caught up on the number, but it says C X L I X. So I'm like, okay, so. Yeah, I I I my brain just decided, no, we not gonna try that, so feel free to decipher that number on your own homework. The deceased says, I set up a ladder amongst the Netoroo and I am a divine being among them. And in another chapter, he says, uh, the Assar Nu. Shall come forth upon your ladder which Ra hath made for him and Haru and Satesh shall grab him firmly by the hand. Finally, when the custom of placing a model of the ladder in the tomb fell into disuse. The priest provided for the necessity of the dead by painting a ladder on the papry, oh, that's interesting. Um, that were inscribed with the text from the Perdum Haru and were buried with them. So that's interesting to see how that custom like started and then kind of um. Went through Kepa, if you will, alright. Oh, here we go, the amulet of the two fingers, which to me look like two candlesticks, but you know, who am I? I'm not even an artist, like what, what, what do I know? So the amulet of the two fingers, this amulet is intended to represent the two fingers index and. Medius. I definitely think that means middle finger, I'm just throwing that out there, just a thought. But it is your longest finger and it does illustrate one being longer, so it makes sense to me, so doing that is what it is. Um, represent the two fingers, which the Netor Haru employed in helping his father Assar up the ladder. And then he cites which Paparus into heaven and had been described above. It is found in the interior of the mummy and is usually made of obsidian or hematite. So um, again, the note, I like to make the notations of what materials. Um, were in use to try to, again, try to be as authentic and um. In our reconstruction, if you will. Alright, the amulet of the eye of Haru, so we have seen this a gajillion in one times, so. This one right here, again, if it's facing the opposite direction, that is the eye of Ra, not the eye of Haru. Um, so it matters what direction it is facing, um cuz some people try to. Oh, whatever, like no, it had a meaning, like they made it that way for a reason, so. Um, alright, so the Eye of Haru amulet or a Ujat is one of the commonest of all. Um, it use. Its use seems to have been universal in all periods, it was made of gold, silver. Granite, hematite, carnelian, lapis lazuli, porcelain, wood, et cetera. Although the rubric of the chapter of the Perdum Haru directs that the amulet. Should be made of either lapis or of Mak stone, M A K. Uh, the Ujat is of two kinds, oh, see, see. He starts to differentiate. Uh, so uh, one facing to the left and the other facing to the right, together they represent the two eyes of Haru. One of which according to ancient texts was white and the other black. From another point of view, one Ujat represents the sun and the other moon or Ra. And Assar respectively, so again, it. Time periods, where you are, where the, like what location you were in, like, you know, again, different or similar interpretations, but. Uh, or maybe differing uh interpretations, but the same practice, that's how I wanna say that. But speaking generally, when the Kometu wore the Ujat as an amulet. They intended it to bring them the blessings of strength, vigor, protection, safety, good health and the like. And they had in their minds the Eye of Haru, possibly the white one or the sun. So again, um, the sun, that is like, you know how they say your sun sign, your moon sign and all that. So your sun, Virgo, is how you express outwardly, that is how you present to. Like the world in general, um, but your moon, Aries. Um, your moon is like maybe how you are on the inside. How maybe you interact with those close to you, like that kinda thing. So I think that's really interesting, like especially as you're moving into the afterlife. You want a, an amulet of uh outward appearance, but an amulet of that. Um, sun energy instead of lunar. So uh, that to me is even like that maat, like you're going through a moon type of process. We wanna raise up that fire or that sun or that raw energy, so to like balance it out, so. Keep going. Alright, uh, where am, oh, I lost the page, sorry. Uh, so, but speaking generally, they were blah, 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 blah. And good health and the like, and they had in their minds the Eye of Har- of Haru, possibly the white one or the sun. In religious texts, the expression Meu- Meu Jat, i.e. the filling of the Ujat, is often used. And from many considerations, it is clear that we must understand it to refer to the sun at the summer solstice. Because that's when the sun is like the most potent, the most uh powerful, strong, whatever. Whatever adjective you wanna use. Uh thus, the amulet seems to have been uh intended to bring its wearer. Strength and health similar to that of the sun in the season of the year when it's most powerful. Yo, I swear, I'm sorry, I I'm just like, my ego is just like, yes. Hmm, I was on point before he even said it, I'm feeling myself, alright. Bringing it back down to earth. Like, that's enough. Um. In another chapter with a whole bunch of letters that I really don't feel like transcribing right now or translating. I'll put that. Chapter of the Perdum Haru, the deceased is made to say. The Netor Jehudi have bought the Ujat and he hath made it rest after the departed, oh Ra. It was grievously uh grievously affact- afflicted. By the storm, but Jehudi made it rest after it departed out of the storm. I am sound and it is sound, I am sound and it is sound. And Nebsoni, the nature of piety or peydy, piety, I like saying it that way, is sound. To obtain the full benefit of the Ujat amulet for the deceased, it was obligatory to make one in lapis. And to plate it with gold. Oh, I love it. It's just like, just visually, I'm picturing that is so just beautiful. Um, and then to offer it. Um, offerings at the summer solstice. Oh, so that's interesting, ho- let me keep reading before I, to see if that, that thought I just had is on point. Uh, another. Had then to be made of jasper and after the specified chapter, blah, 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 had been recited over it. Uh, it was laid on any part of the body of the deceased and it became a nature to take the place on the boat of Ra. Uh, at the solstice, twelve altars had to be lit. Four for Ra to move, four for the Ujat, four for the other Netoroo had been mentioned in the chapter. Uh, an interesting example, okay, so I'll get back to that part, so the re- what made me kinda be like, ooh, that's kinda dope. Um. Is the idea that you make the, you have the one that you put on the body, but that simultaneously you have the lapis one. That and you put the gold on it and then, so to me, that's like another way of like having ancestor veneration. Uh, where it's like, okay, it was made at the time, so there's still that connection to the person who passed away through. Um, utilizing this symbol and and giving all uh offerings and things like that to it. So I think that is like, again, just another way of. I can see us doing that now in the twenty first century, if somebody passes away, like. Um. Either having it or like, I mean, y'all can't see it, um, on the other side of the light that's right here, I have. Uh, right when I walk in my, my house, I have pictures of my ancestors and um, like just, you know, family members. Um, which same thing, but um. So I, I, to me, it was very, very important um to have a wall of just all family photos. So that I'm constantly remembering, seeing, talking to my ancestors all the time. So I think having these pieces as a functional um. Ritual or having it be part of a functional ritual, cuz we already know, like, you know, there are other rituals as um practitioners that we're supposed to be doing too. Uh, like poor libation and and give offerings and things like that, um, throughout the month and the year anyways, but it's kinda like. Uh, but definitely at New Year's, at um Repwin Pet, like you also. Um, would have that kinda thing, so. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I went to say hi and I ended up doing something else, so um. I could even see it as like. If you, um. I'm trying to think of like a miniature version of it, but like having, you know how, um. It's not a worry stone, I'm like, I definitely don't have any of those right here, right now. But that I, like how they have those little circular stones and sometimes they'll say like. Love or they'll have like things inscribed on it or you'll see like the Eye of Haru um on them, I think that would be really dope. To have, um, like as Kometu. Uh, when we go to uh different, what's the word I'm trying, cemeteries? And you know, people usually will leave a stone, like, it would be dope if anytime you visited, you bring a new lapis with the eye on it. And leave it, you know, at the burial site, like. I don't know, I thi- I think, at least for me, I, that to me like mimics. What it's saying was supposed to be done anyways, so. Uh, I think that, like, I don't know, feel free to jump in on that, like, if that's a good idea, or if that's something that, you know. Sounds related or if it's just like off. Uh, so, continuing, an interesting example of the use of the Ujat occurs. In a Greek spell, because I want to read this right now. Alright, no, I I am actually gonna read it because it it like walks through an actual ritual, so I'll read it, we'll see where we go, we'll see where he goes. Alright, so, um, and la, 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 um. Oh, see, now this makes me not wanna read it again, but we gonna do it, we committed. Uh, an interesting example of the use of the Ujat occurs in a Greek spell for the discovery of a thief. Written in late, as late as the fourth century. Of our era, so in CE time. Um, in it, we are told to take the herb of the. Kheelbe and Bugloss. Those are some herbs I'm gonna need to fill, like, what the heck is that? I don't know, K H E L K B E I. Collectbe? I'm probably not even saying that right, it might be something that sounds way easier than what I'm doing, but whatever. Um, and it literally says Bugloss, B U G L O S S. So those two herbs. Press out the juice and burn the crushed leaves and mix the ashes with the juice. That's a lot. Anoint and write upon the wall. Kuh, K H O and then O with the line over it. Uh, with these materials and take a common piece of wood and cut a hammer. Uh, out of it and strike it upon the ear pronouncing this spell. I abjure thee by the holy names, render up the thief who has carried away and such. A thing and I I think this might actually just be some Greek stuff, like this. I'm like, this is gonna require a little more research, I'm not sure, like, is he saying this? Uh huh, okay, so he makes another note, um, talking about um pronunciations. So you go through it, you say a whole bunch of holy names which are all in Greek. Uh, and following the words, we have a picture of the Ujat, which. With an arrangement of certain vowels on each side, it is thus, so it looks like this right here. Like, so you got all the vowels around it and then the Ujat. So in my mind, that would be using again Hekau. Um, you know, that vibration um that comes from when we. Use vowels, like you always, you know, you feel different parts of your sinuses or whatever vibrating, so. Giving life and energy to the Ujat, so that part makes sense. Um, but I still think that actual incantation, cuz that's what I'm gonna call it. Um, it seems very, very Greek to me. Um, alright, so next part thirteen, the amulet of life, AKA the Ankh. Which, if you've never seen an Ankh before, that's an Ankh. I've seen some people put, like, say it's an Ankh and it was really like, you know how they have that symbol for women? And I'm like, no, that's not an Ankh, but okay, you know, nice try. Like participation trophy, you tried. So the object which represented, um, which is represented by this amulet is unknown. And of all the suggestions which have been made concerning it, none is more unlikely than. Which it would give it a phallic origin, whatever it may represent, it certainly symbolizes life. Every nature carries it and it seems even in its earliest of times to be a conventional representation of some object. Which in the remotest period. Had been used as an amulet in the Papris of uh Ani. And then he says second addition plate two. I'm like, how many addition, you only, how many additions did they ha- have for this man? Or it just says E D I T, so maybe that might be a shortening for something else, but looks like addition to me. Uh, plate two, the Ankh rises from the um Tet, which I imagine might be Thet. And the arms which are proj- oh, the Jed, that's what that means. I forgot, he, for whatever reason, he writes Jed T E T. So for whatever reason, but um. And the arms which protect it and support the disc from the sun are as seen here. Uh, so it looks like this, so I'm pretty sure we've seen this before. Is what he's talking about, so you got the sun disc, you got the two arms, the um. Ankh, I don't know why I couldn't remember that, and then you got the Jed right there. So, um. This amulet is made of various substances and was chiefly employed as a pendant or a neck. so um this amulet is made of various substances and was chiefly employed as a pendant or a necklace so that also makes me think that as contemporary practitioners maybe that's something that we should be either looking into or I'm not gonna lie I just had like let me finish the sentence the amulet is made of the substance was usually employees necklace okay good I read it all so I'm not gonna lie I I know I said I want another tattoo and I wanna get it here but I'm really thinking about getting like a tattoo like this I don't know if I'm a hundred percent gonna do that maybe that's something for in a couple of years but I feel like if I did do um a tattoo similar to that that I I would probably do like different symbology or symbols uh in it that have to do with like protection and then or like stuff to protect the heart and things like that that I would do that so um if you see me with a tattoo that looks like that you know where the it came from alright so the next one the amulet Nefer so it looks like this right there so for ye old Christians or people who come from Christian background um that should look familiar because there's a Christian symbol that literally looks like almost spitting image just like that so um that would be interesting to see what the connection is there or what they say that symbol means to them but they in their prison amen anyway so it is what it is alright so this amulet signifies happiness or good luck it represents a musical instrument it was made of carnelian redstone red porcelain and the like and uh was a very favorite form for the pendants of necklaces and strings of beads yo this I'm telling you if I make this tattoo it's gonna be so freaking dope like that's page fifty nine for those of y'all who um are with me I'm like let me check the time just to see where we're at oh I got time last time uh alright so the amulet of the serpent's head so that's it right there um literally just a head and it's like respectfully if it was dead why is the tongue curling up like if it's dead was that rigor mortis like come on anyway too much uh this amulet was placed um on the dead body to keep it from being bitten by snakes in the underworld or in the tomb interesting so that reminds me of that story that we read um oh gosh I feel like maybe almost a month ago at this point where it was saying like they would ha- they would hire people just to watch the body to make sure like people didn't come steal it that you know if bugs or if an animal tried to get at it and protect it so I'm like okay that makes sense um it was made of redstone blah 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 as the nature are set is often typified by a serpent and the red is the color um peculiar to her that's interesting because anybody else that I've seen always make goes for the lapis like that blue that cobalt blue for our set so the fact that he's like no I said you know red red kinda goes with her I'm like and I get it cuz you know the fat nod and you know menses and uteruses and all that good stuff so I mean I get that connection but the fact that he just said like red goes with her is just new to me um this power had been transferred to it by means of the words of the chapter of the perdom Haru uh ten twenty thirty fourth chapter of the perdom Haru which was uh often inscribed upon it in the text reads oh serpent I am the flame which shineth upon the opener of hundreds of thousands of years and the standard of the god Tenpu or as others say the standard of the young plants and flowers depart ye from me for I am the divine links I'm like now we talking about cats so I'm like so some have thought that the snake's head represents the serpent which um simulates the ram's head in the er Hekau I said I never seen I've seen Hekau but not er Hekau instrument oh ho okay then that makes sense so it's an instrument that is used and with sound and vibrations then that makes sense why it's a er Hekau um instrument used um in performing the ceremony for opening of the mouth so this is it right here the instrument I mean and these are other things used in the opening of the mouth ceremony but like that's the one they're talking about in particular um so the kerhead priest touching the statue of the deceased with the er er Hekau instrument to affect the opening of the mouth so it's not an instrument like a flute it's an instrument like something you use dumb and yet alright oh I was gonna say we gonna pause but now we're at the amulet of Minyet so we gonna read that one we gonna end on a high note this amulet was in use in Kemet as early as the sixth dynasty and it was worn or held or carried with the cistram by the nature who kings priests priestesses etcetera usually it is held in the hand but it is often worn on the neck its object was to bring joy health to the wearer and was believed to possess magical properties uh it represented nutrition so shout out to Mentu who should probably start wearing Minettes or Menat I know it's a Menat I ju- I'm teasing it's Menat M E N A T Menat and strength and might of the male and female organs of generation mystically considered was supposed to be united therein the amulet is made of bronze stone and porcelain and other substances and when laid upon the body of the deceased brought to it the power of life and reproduction so this is what that symbol is so pretty much it's like a like I guess like a beaded necklace and then it like this part hang oh wait wrong one like this metal thing right there that part that would like hang in the middle of your back type of a thing so alright so we are on page sixty right now I'm like wait 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 where are we so and we're actually almost on the next chapter which is talking about magical um figures which I'm like lowkey being a little nosy right now so it is what it is so um I suppose before we go are there any thoughts anybody wants to share any um I guess repeats um anything for the good of the order I I have I have to have humor I can't take myself too seriously so um alright so I'm not seeing anything that's okay um if anything the I'll put the replay back up and you can always comment there um so just an I guess in closing um I thoroughly am digging this book um even if y'all have any other suggestions um feel free doa um feel free to make suggestions uh the only thing I I um do try to stay away from is I try to pick books that are like relatively skinny uh something that is not like a rare book that other people can't get um and I try to stay away from certain authors just because they are still alive and I don't I know this isn't like a copyright thing but you know I I don't wanna give away their material for free so um and just read it online for free when you know I mean obviously it's a little different but um you know if there is a certain author I would rather reach out to them first before just like reading their stuff online uh so uh we do have the group uh comedic living in the twenty first century so that is actually currently getting like a uh reworking if you will of simply just there's there's stuff going on that um and certain conversations that's like alright we we need we need to elevate here we need we need to elevate so um feel free to join us over there for more conversations more steady um I'm actually starting to think of maybe doing like um more activities over there so um you know again any suggestions or if there are any needs of um you know that people or topics that people wanna talk about and just kinda say like okay well how to Camites look at these things then um you know feel free to join us over there so again comedic living in the twenty first century over on Facebook uh Minyet Ankh Maat dot com me on Instagram like it is what it is so alright have an excellent week I will see you all of y'all next Thursday um so I'm a tune panateer saw we to maintain panter I would do a ma keti pa Haru give yourself to nature daily keep yourself in nature jelly and may tomorrow be us today so